Good evening and welcome to Canyon City Planning Commission and Joint Study Session with City Council, Wednesday, October 23rd, 2019. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you, Denise. Will you please call roll?
Certainly. Good evening. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue?
Here.
Commissioner Shagley? Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
And Mayor Preston Troutman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Cochran? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Hammack? Councilmember Hockes? Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Is that everyone?
It's everybody.
Okay. So tonight, looks like we have our discussion for the riverfront zoning. So if you guys want to continue our joint sessions, it's all yours.
Okay. So thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and Members of Council. This is the fourth work session, joint work session, on riverfront zoning. We met two weeks ago, most recently, and there was a request for this fourth session this evening to specifically follow up on some signage questions and other questions. So I don't really have anything formal to walk through. I have included the information that I put in your packets. We did some further testing on the sign regulations to give you different examples of how they could be applied within the community. And so I'm happy to answer any questions on those or walk through those in detail if you would like. But I've really just, I have several of the slides from the various presentations and happy to pull up a slide to discuss as needed. So just opening it up for questions at this time. I would like to, if we can try to keep it to about 50 minutes, so we have a little bit of a break, just to transition to the formal planning commission meeting.
So we're starting with questions?
Yep. You can just jump right in.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of staff based on the changes reflected in our agendas today?
May I?
Yes.
Your honor?
Yes, your honor.
It's a little different now. Thank you.
Who is that down there? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I don't know, and I don't probably remember, Deana, is that, does this cover, coverage of a window for signage as well? Is there certain square inches or something like that? I must have missed it somewhere.
Yes.
Can you point that out?
Yep. We can definitely walk through that. So there are, I'm just trying to see if there's an example to pull up. There are regulations that talk about the regulations for window signs. So in terms of a category, that's a permanent sign, and a type is a window sign. And I'll try to find the exact page here in your packets.
Thirty. I think it's thirty-two.
What?
So page thirty-
Seven.
Thirty-
I have thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Right. So of the joint session packet, page thirty-two has the table of the permanent signs, and the last row there covers window signs and the regulations around window signs. So the intent is that window signs shall not exceed 15 percent of the storefront glazing in which the sign is placed. And the idea there is, you know, we don't want windows that are heavily covered by signs such that you can't see into the business or restaurant, whatever is occurring behind that window. So the idea is to allow for a certain amount of fenestration.
Are those signs there? Did you calculate those?
So sure, I'm happy to walk through this example. So one of the examples that we included in the packet, so remember, this sign code is not intended to apply to our Main Street, but we thought that a lot of folks might be aware of and used to a typical storefront on Main Street. So we did that as an example. So the table here is testing the sign code against a typical storefront on Main Street, which is 44 feet wide. And what we did is, we have a, the first row that you see there is a ground level wall sign. We assume that that would be a one-by-13 sign, so basically a banner sign across the top of, usually across the top of a door of a business, and that's 13 square feet. And then you can see how three different window signs are accommodated within that storefront. Two four-by-four signs, which would be 16 square feet each, and then a third one, which is the maximum three-square-foot sign, and that's to try to accommodate typical hours of operation or an open sign, things like that. So it's an illustration of how the sign code is written to be applied if somebody wants to utilize the riverfront zoning, but applying it on a historic storefront on Main Street, so you can see how that would work.
What about if someone, like a sign that says "open"? Does that count in that? Because it says no illuminated sign, is that, but it's not.
The, that's a tricky component with, we tried accommodating those à la the window signs that are the three-square-feet in terms of the open signs. There may be, you know, there may be nuances yet in terms of rolling this out and consideration of Reed versus Gilbert on sort of being maybe just hands-off on the open signs. That's something that will just remain to be seen as this rolls out and is being tested.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We're going down a path that we've never had before, and I think I appreciate that idea that probably just see what it ends up looking like. Okay. Thank you. Are those signs on the windows, are those 15 percent?
That's 15 percent of the storefront area, so use the mouse.
Well, it's got to be 15 percent of the glazing.
Of the, right. So that's-
And you're taking that whole area?
I'm, yeah, I'm trying to outline it with the mouse here. So this-
I see. But you're actually taking it to windows, are you not?
Well, it's one window. So there's a mullion, but this large piece of the storefront is what would be calculated to get to that 15 percent.
Is that the way it's written?
That's where it's intended to be written.
Technically, that glazing is that whole front part? I don't look at that as glazing.
So it says, yeah, 15 percent of the storefront glazing in which the sign is placed. So again, as written, the intent is that it would be, so if you can follow the mouse here, it's, bear with me. So it's in the upper-left corner of the glazing that would be considered, and then that primary window, right, that primary glazing area, those are typically in one frame, and then there's a mullion separating two panes of glass. So we would count that as the storefront glazing.
It just looks a little disproportionate in that picture.
Well, that's because you're counting the whole, I think that, I think that gets subjective to different interpretations.
So the intent is the storefront glazing that the sign is placed. So if the applicant wants to place it in this location, then that storefront glazing that would be considered for measurement would be that window, that area that I'm outlining here.
And I understand your point. You're saying that that glass, that, what's representing glass, that whole front area is one piece?
It's considered one storefront glazing for purposes of applying the code.
Do you define glazing and their definitions?
We have-
I just think it's, you know, your interpretation versus mine versus who's enforcing this? Code enforcement?
So storefront glazing definition is on page 28. It's the third-to-last of the definitions, and it reads, "means any glass area encompassed by a frame within the storefront of a business." So that definition, so the frame of the overall window, it doesn't include the mullion. So the frame of the window would be, so again, I'm starting the mouse on the upper-left corner, going across, then down, back, and up. So that would be one storefront glazing.
If everybody else is okay with it, but I'm thinking that in most cases in Canyon City, that's two pieces of glass, and most people would look at that logically and say that's two windows.
Right. But by virtue of our definition, we've clarified-
But you talk about it encompassed in a frame, and each one of those windows would be encompassed in a frame even though you're referring that middle piece by another-
As a mullion instead of the frame. So sometimes windows have, like, older homes, if you have double-hung windows, have mullions-
Right.
Right? With smaller panes of glass that are within a frame, within a larger frame. So that's the intent here, and that's how the definition was written.
Everybody else is good with it. I think it's a headache, but-
Well, that would probably just boil down to a training issue for the code enforcement.
Right. For Patrick, that would be reviewing this.
Using the example with the mullions, if that was cut into eight pieces of glass in that one square, you wouldn't consider each one of those eight a single pane.
Right. It's within the frame of the storefront glazing.
Yeah. Our code enforcement, we've been through this.
And yes, I think once this, you know, if this rolls out and there's an application of it, there absolutely can be some training sessions with the neighborhood services team in terms of how to apply the code if they're out looking for violations. But in terms of a sign application coming in for initial permitting, that would be going through current planning.
Well, here, again, I think we talked, had this discussion a couple times, is that the person that are going to be attracted to doing something is probably used to seeing this. It's just not going to be anybody nearby. And so they'll, I believe they're not understanding that because they're used to doing it. They've probably done it elsewhere. That's who I think will be attracted to this sort of, if you will, shopping center or area of the world. They are in the one we have out there in East Canyon. To get it there, there's no problem there. So I believe that one thing begats the other, and I don't believe this is out of the ordinary.
Deana, will there be permits involved for getting a sign? Because the ones who actually are the professionals, it says, only professionally manufactured, and of course, I think they're going to be the ones applying it, would they have to get the permit to put it on there?
Yes. Typically, I mean, the applicant for a sign permit could be the owner of the business or, but often it is the sign company that's fabricating.
So all we've got to make sure is that they know what the codes are as far as the permits, and then we're clear, right?
Absolutely. And, you know, one of the tools that could be created for this is an information sheet or information packet explaining the regulations and utilizing some of these graphics.
Okay. I think if it's all consistent, I think we'll be okay as far as the permits go.
Any other questions pertaining to signage or any other discussion? Or, Deana, do you have anything else to add?
No. Again, I mean, we, so the three examples we had in the packet were, one, applying this prospective code to the Main Street, just as an example, because folks might be more familiar with storefronts on Main Street, and that's this example here. We then also provided an example in your packet of a multi-tenant building. So if a multi-tenant building was constructed on the riverfront, how each tenant could have their signs, right, a square footage of signage for their storefront, and then the building itself could still have identification signage for the entire building. And so literally, this spreadsheet just walked through different examples, so showing four tenants, and tenants A and D in this example had the same type of signage, same square footage. Tenant B had window signs and a projecting sign. Tenant C had awning signs, so we gave an illustration of how that could be utilized. And then it also provided a summary on the bottom, let me go back one, summary on the bottom of the overall signage for the building. And so if I can pull up the graphics, so what this is illustrating is tenants A and D that are in the spreadsheet is, have wall signs and window signs, right? So the two on the end. Tenant B is an example of somebody with window signs and a projecting sign, and Tenant C is that example of somebody that may have awning signs and a projecting sign. So each of these individual tables illustrate how those could be calculated, and they can have adequate signage within the regulations, within the maximum. But then it also accommodates for a multi-tenant building, where accommodating upper wall signs, you know, a lot of multi-tenant buildings have that type of identification on them, in that it also accommodates a monument sign, which can be a multi-tenant sign. I added an image of the, just walking through each one, but I'm trying to get to, there we go. So the multi-tenant building could also have a monument sign, and so that monument sign can have the identity for the overall building at the top and still have individual, a tenant name as well on that monument sign. So that illustration or testing was showing how a multi-tenant building could be developed, and again, each tenant has their signage, and then the overall building has its identity as well. And then the last testing example that we did that was in the packet was looking at a new single-tenant building and how signage could be applied for that new single-tenant building.
I did have a question, and maybe I skipped through it in all this and reading some of it. Do we have an ordinance for flag poles?
I don't know. Do anybody else know the answer to that?
And what caught my eye about that was flagging and streamer pennants. I was just trying to imagine that whole process from the last meeting, and I got to thinking to myself, well, if I want to put up a flag pole and put an American flag up, I don't want it to be limited to eight feet, because everybody walks by, it's going to be dragging their hat or head over it.
So that type of sign is in the regulations as in the category of a portable or-
Right, but it's limited to eight feet.
Portable sign. So that's on page 33.
Right.
And so we have identified different maximum dimensions from other codes. So Commissioner, am I hearing that you would prefer to have those be larger, allowed to be larger?
I don't know. It was just a question. I thought, and I correct myself, it's no taller than 12 feet is the limit, but if you wanted to put up a larger flag, I guess you're just stuck.
Right. And so remember the context of this. So the maximum heights that are proposed here for flags when pole-mounted on the ground, for the mixed-use district, we're saying no taller than 35 feet, and in the, only in the residential districts are they a maximum of 12 feet. And if you recall, we're proposing small lot residential here, so the lots are going to be smaller, right, on the smaller size, and so we thought that a maximum height of 12 feet was appropriate in this context.
But you're talking in the business section, not the residential.
So on page 33, in the table that has type "portable,"
Okay, yeah, all right, all right.
And then-
I see that.
Under maximum height?
I see that. Thank you.
It clarifies two different heights for the mixed-use areas and then for the residential areas.
Told you I could have overlooked it. Did you actually check that out in terms of a 12-foot with a standard flag and the hanging of the flag? I think you're going to be, you're going to be below eight foot, aren't you?
If you do a 12-foot and then you've got a three-by-five flag, that's going to bring you down to nine. If you put a Colorado flag below that, now you're going to be down to six, and anybody like Ryan might run into it.
Well, yeah, but even if you just got a flag at three, you're losing, you're down to nine, and then you've got the hang-down of the flag, which could be another two-and-a-half feet.
Right. And especially if it's not even windy, then it'll be hanging down even further.
I think that needs to be just a touch.
You might need to raise the flag a little bit.
Three foot.
Well, if there's any specific recommendations, we can bring those forward, or you can bring those forward in the formal planning commission meeting.
Is there a problem with 15 foot? That at least gets three more feet.
Any other thoughts on that?
Well, there's several flag poles up in the Dawson Ranch area. Because the wind blows so hard, you can't put them on the house. I would say they're closer to 15 feet.
I think mine's either 15 or 18. It's one of those telescopic ones, and it goes.
Could the measurement be to the bottom of the flag?
Well, so, right, so I don't know if the comments are coming from a concern on clearance from a pedestrian, so remember that these are meant to be on somebody's private residential property, so not necessarily in a commercial setting where it might be hanging over into the sidewalk.
That's right. And the other one's 35 feet.
35 feet height for the mixed-use districts.
The mixed-use. And the other one is for your house on your lot in a residential area. Does the minimum clearance apply on the residential lot still? No, it doesn't. It only applies to the, are the MU? Right. Mixed use. 35 feet. Okay.
I see what you're, so you're referring to the second bullet under other conditions.
Does each one of those conditions apply to the appropriate zoning beside it, or are they general conditions?
Those would be general conditions, so that would be if, if a resident had their flag pole such that it would blow over into the public right-of-way, in that context, yes, they would have to comply with that minimum clearance.
Yeah, but most of them are in the yard. When it's residential, it's more in the yard than where people are walking.
Right.
I just think your, I think your calculations, you need to move it to 15 foot.
Okay, we'll make that note, and that can be, we can bring that up during the regular planning commission meeting.
Okay. We'll bring it up during our, during our hearing.
So any other questions on the signage?
Is there, what's the thoughts about telling the public where this is at? Monument sign on Highway 50, and that's down the road, has nothing to do with this. A lighted sign on Highway 50 and First Street, or any thoughts, or?
You mean in terms of where this would-
Yeah, to point them to this direction, to where they're at, because you can't see it from the highway. And that's probably a discussion for another time.
Right. So remember that this is intended to be used for those riverfront districts. So if and when somebody would come in and ask for a rezoning to, say, riverfront mixed-use, then this is the sign regulations that would comply with that particular property. And remember that most of those properties are within sort of the downtown area of the riverfront between First and 11th Streets, and that most of the intended users would either be driving at 25 miles per hour maximum past these sites, or they would be walking past the sites.
Mr. Mayor, are you asking about wayfinding signs as well?
You're right. That's a more appropriate, and it has nothing to do with it, just trying to visualize how we have it, you've got a nice setup there on the river, and how do we tell the passing public, how are we going to do that at some point? That should be a thought for a notice something.
Right. And I think that'll come forward as we develop the wayfinding program.
Fine. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
So that monument sign, how does that now, somewhere in the process, you account for that not being off-site, right? Or is it got to be on-site?
It is, it's meant to be on-site.
On-site, but just a different type of site.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if I could go back just a moment, I take it the only signage we're going to have with light pollution is a flag pole. Because all the other lighting we've talked about is ground-level lighting, down-facing lighting. This one doesn't specify that.
We, well, you mean in terms of-
That's a good point.
-illumination of the-
Flag. American flag, yeah.
So I think the language generally talks about downlighting.
Right.
Correct.
So somebody could have the light, sort of the gooseneck, you know, the light fixtures that have structure coming out, and then the light shines downward towards whatever it's trying to illuminate. So that is one way that the flags could be illuminated.
I don't know that you'd be able to, well, they make flag pole top lighting for this purpose of illuminating an American flag, but this is the only section, if I'm just glancing through it again, that we don't talk about downward-facing lighting. Everything else is either non-illuminated or down-
It just says it will be externally illuminated only.
Yeah, but it doesn't say up or down, sideways. Do we want to clarify that? Or would you want to make that the only exception, or?
Yeah, I'm trying to recall if that language is general and in another location. I think that's actually in the lighting standards, so-
Right. It is. Do you know where to find it? What page is that?
Let me go backwards here, get to that section. So that's, on page 22 is where the lighting standards are. And then depending on what district you are, there's just that half-page of lighting regulations for the mixed-use district, and then a half-page for residential.
But then you've got number six, from what Gary's talking about.
Well, yeah, number five.
Says pole-mounted lighting over eight feet in height is not permitted.
Well, and number five eliminates it too. It says no, D on number five is no uplighting, so you would not be able to illuminate an American flag from the ground?
Based on the way this is written.
That's under mixed use.
What's that?
That's under mixed use.
Well, this is riverfront residential.
It doesn't say anything about uplighting on riverfront residential.
Well, that's probably where we'd have the biggest problem with it, because you could hang a light or something for a shorter flag pole, but if you had a 30-foot flag pole, or, I'm sorry, a 15-foot flag pole, it would be hard to get, and like Sid, they do make them, but you'd be restricting people to have that type of light on a flag pole, on a 24-hour pole.
So we could either, we can clarify, in lighting for residential, that uplighting of flags are, of pole mount, or ground-mounted flags are permitted? Is that something that folks would like to see?
I don't know that I care one way or the other on it. I was just asked in the question, again, they sell flagged pole, they call it tree-top lighting for flag poles?
They're about $30, and they're solar. I've got one.
Yeah.
So you just put it right below the wall, it screws on, it's, but that pole-mounted lighting over eight feet is going to eliminate that possibility. So if we're going to go with our 15-foot flag pole, we're going to need to put a lighting down on top of that, so.
Right. Because you also want to make sure you're reading number two that talks, under the residential, that talks about lighting not aiming or spilling onto adjacent properties.
Well, those lights are, I want to say, all the ones I've ever seen are basically three feet in circumference.
Mine's about six feet.
Is it?
Yeah. It's a cone. It comes down.
Yeah, it comes down as a cone.
Yep.
Well, you're talking ground level, six feet, though.
Well, my flag pole is right around whatever, 15, 20 feet, and it's up above, and it comes down, and it's about, it doesn't illuminate my sidewalk, so.
But there is a difference between a flag pole illumination and then just a regular pole-mounted lighting, because some residential houses do have pole lighting in their yards, and we don't want them to have, you know, eight foot is plenty for that purpose.
And we want to make sure that those have a full cutoff, so it doesn't create light pollution on their neighbor.
Right, and so I think you might want to, if you're gonna do the 15-foot, that needs to be just for the flags and not for all pole lighting.
Can, can you just put a, a, a simple verbiage in there that addresses the flagpoles so that there's not any confusion?
Yep.
In terms of what we're gonna allow in lighting for flagpoles, in terms of, are we gonna do up or down? I mean, I, I don't care, but just address it.
I would say be consistent.
Do what?
I think we should just be consistent.
I mean, yeah, I don't care, I mean, you just say that if lighting for flagpoles is allowed, is allowed, is downward, whatever that terminology is, is it used?
Down is great, it would eliminate the light pollution from above and it would be consistent across the board, so.
Right.
And they are relatively inexpensive, too.
Yeah, they're cheap, so.
But we've got that clean and you could do whatever you want to do.
Okay.
We can, we can add that in our discussion later.
Yeah.
You keep adding stuff to it.
All right, anything else on, on signs?
Not on signs.
Okay, what's the next topic?
So, just any other questions, conversation around other components of, of the proposed zoning regulations? Mr. Meisner?
So I just have a general question because of my lack of knowledge or understanding. When we're all done with this process and we have the two riverfront zoning options available, the maps that we talked about, if, if I have a piece of property in that map, let's say that I'm at, I've got property, let's just, just for, at Sixth and, at the river. You know, one of those that's got all the colors?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm just.
Doesn't matter. So I've got, I've got property there, which is now maybe industrial. That property is gonna remain industrial until I request it to change, is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
What happens if I sell it?
The zoning hasn't changed.
It still won't change.
So the new owner, the new owner would have the option to, to either use the current zoning or come in and use this new tool?
By request.
By request.
Okay.
By going through a rezoning process.
Okay. I've had those specific questions asked in terms of, got it.
So I have a question on our last meeting that we had together with planning commission, there was quite a bit of discussion around the types of materials that we would allow for outdoor seating, and were, were you guys able to do any additional digging on what other communities do?
There, there wasn't a lot of time to do a lot of digging, but did reach out, there were references to Vail and Aspen that were mentioned in the meeting, at one point in the meeting. Vail does have a, they have several different design guidelines and design standards, either within their municipal code or as, as different documents, and they also have a formal design review board. So while there may not be specific language on materials of outdoor cafes, it's, the language is written that it's tied to the materiality of the overall building, and that the materiality and colors of an overall building needs to fit into the district that it's, the building is going in. And, and some of their very specific sub-area plans identify a look and feel and character that they're trying to strive for in those districts. So if somebody was coming in to do a new building with an outdoor cafe, their building would go through that design review committee, and the design review committee gives their recommendation on, on approval or not of the palette of materials and, and color.
So what about the chairs?
And, well, so that's what I'm saying, there wasn't, I didn't, I couldn't find anything specific. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but I wasn't able to find anything specific, and I did speak with one of the planners there, and he didn't think there was anything specific, but did reiterate that there are the overall design guidelines that talk about character and materiality and muted colors and, and things like that, and.
But the current verbiage moving forward is durable metal or composite, is that what you're?
So we've, so based on, on the last session, we've modified that to say the materials are, are preferred to be the metal and, and composite.
But no, no paper, I mean, no, no plastic or fiberglass?
Right.
Okay.
And then I also did look into Aspen a little bit as well, and they have sort of a similar situation where they have design guidelines, they actually have a, one of their key set of design guidelines in the key historic area, the community dates to 1980, where they've had design standards in place, or guidelines.
Okay, my turn again. Page 34, 35 for the sandwich board and the feather flag, again, you're saying shall only be displayed during hours of operation on each, is that gonna be enforceable? Or are they gonna be able?
We'll come take your flags.
Or we're gonna take your flags if they're flown at midnight?
Well, usually, what usually happens is if there's a problem, then somebody will probably come to the business and say, hey, by the way, are you aware of this?
Yeah.
Code and?
I'm just saying, I don't even know why it's in there if we really, we're not gonna be the flag police, I hope.
No, but on the dark side of that thought, there's a lot of people that would like to own that sign if you leave it out there.
Yeah, a lot of vandalism. Like, my husband does a sandwich board for his business and they always bring it at, at night for, for safety reasons and?
Okay.
And vandalism reasons.
I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention.
I personally don't need one, but.
I don't either.
All right. Okay. We'll get on composite materials. Sandwich boards.
So were there any further questions on other components of the regulations in terms of the lot or block standards?
I have a question, Nina. Do you have an estimate of how many hours it took for you to put all of this together? Because this was a lot of work.
It, I have not added it up.
Countless.
But it was, you know, we started the effort quasi in May, and I pretty much have been working on this full-time since probably middle of July.
A lot of work has gone into this, and I really appreciate all the visuals and all the details that went into it and thought. It was really well done.
Thank you.
We done?
I think so. I, I don't hear any other questions, and yes, thank you for the presentations and, and putting up with us all these meetings. So, Jim?
I want to comment.
Yes, sir.
As long as we're done with this process, I, I just want to at least unofficially announce to this group that, that in our vision meeting last night, we had a vision, that's probably the most significant process in my four years, and that is that that group at least agreed, it's not been blessed by council, that we are going to essentially, I'll use the rough language, discard 16 and 17 and rewrite them just like we did the riverfront property and clear that whole mess up, and get zoning so that it's understandable and workable from both parties' standpoint. There's an expense associated with that, an allocation of time, but we're not gonna take 16 and 17 and, and pull stuff out of them and rewrite them. We're gonna start with a clean slate, look at other cities, see what's working, and redo 16 and 17 and make them workable. And I appreciate council last night committing to that, the members that were there. I would hope that full council signs off on that. I would hope the new council that comes in signs off on that, and I appreciate staff's effort. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. That sounds like it concludes our joint session on riverfront zoning.
Oh, excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Carry on, planning commission, and good luck tonight.
We'll, we'll discuss this later on in our hearing and hopefully make a recommendation to council to move forward with the, with the plans. And we'll take a few-minute break so everyone can, council can take off, and then we'll start our regular planning commission meeting. Two, two, three minutes.
... when I got the package? And I thought, no, I don't, I don't see that in there. Well, see, I don't think mine's.
Hi, Catherine, this is Brandon. Ryan was telling me that you can't see the screen.
Yeah, I can barely hear you, Brandon, but I can't see in the room.
You can't see anything?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Right now I see your computer screen.
And I think that's quite, that particular models, I think, I think they call it a halo one.
Do you still just see my computer screen?
Yeah, it's like a Windows blue screen.
Give me just a second and I should have that fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, you pay somebody to put it in and it's leaning. Did I get moved? Okay, I was just making sure, I saw you moving signs around, Patrick. What if I want to move?
I was just, I have always heard that flags are always lit from the bottom, and so.
I feel like a stepchild now.
They just have to be lit up at night.
Patrick, I feel like a stepchild now.
So I knew they had to be lit up, but I just always had assumed they always had to be lit from the bottom, but obviously, that's not the case in your house.
Catherine, are you there?
Yeah.
I apologize, I was just talking to Chase, because everything I was trying to do was working, and he told me that currently there's a black yellow screen for you to be able to see at the mic. I apologize.
Okay, so I won't be able to see it?
No, you won't be able to see inside, I apologize.
Okay.
I, I was wondering why nothing?
Is that gonna be remedied at some point?
Uh, yeah, he did tell me that next year's budget, um, yes, so hopefully, yeah, next year, in a few months.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
Okay.
So sorry for that.
That's okay, okay.
Sorry.
No, no, no problem.
You can hear everything, though, correct?
I can hear everything, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
The plans are pretty good news.
I think that's the standard.
We'll continue our planning commission meeting now. Item number three is approval of minutes. I now ask for approval of minutes from the September 25, 2019 Planning Commission. Does anyone have any corrections to those minutes? Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend we approve the minutes from the September 25 meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item 4A, public hearing, Red Hawk Landing property, minor subdivision, case number SCB 2019-013, and special review use, RV Park on Lot 2, case number SCB 2019-003. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Patrick, can we please have a staff report?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. Tonight we are hearing the matter of a minor subdivision for a property located at 1725 Mariposa Road, calling itself Red Hawk Landing. There is also a special review use for proposed use associated with one of the lots within this minor subdivision. The subject property is located on the north side of Mariposa Road between the intersections with Valley Road to the northwest and Wild Rose Drive to the west. It was platted as part of Dawson Business Park subdivision in 2001 and retains a C general commercial zoning. The property is 8.2 acres in area and is currently undeveloped and vacant. Although utilities exist within Mariposa Road, the lack of development in the site means none of those utilities have been extended into the property. It slopes to the north to a low spot on the property, the low spot on the property is near the northwest corner where it shares a drainage wash that crosses this property into the adjacent Dawson Stables property. The site offers tremendous views of maces to the north and west. Regarding the land use requests associated with this public hearing, the first involves the minor subdivision request to split this property into three lots. Lot 1, situated at southeast corner of the property, would be a 1.53-acre parcel, which would have an intended use for either a hotel or a motel. Lot 2, which is situated at the southwest corner of the property, would Regarding the land use requests associated with this public hearing, the first involves the minor subdivision request to split this property into three lots. Lot one, situated at southeast corner of the property would be a 1.53 acre parcel, which would have an intended use for either a hotel or a motel. Lot two, which is situated at the southwest corner of the property would comprise approximately 1.58 acres and is intended for use as a recreational vehicle park. This will be examined in further detail in a moment. The largest of the lots would be lot three, located to the north of the property. It comprises approximately five acres and is planned for both equestrian uses and limited greenhouse agricultural crop production. All three lots will front Mariposa Road, which means lot with requirements specified for the C, they will meet the lot frontage requirements specified for C commercially zoned properties. However, Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision will only have one shared access point to Mariposa Road via a common access driveway on lot three with a public access and egress easement upon it. To reiterate, the subdivision has been named by the applicant Red Hawk Landing, and staff finds it to meet the minimum requirements for minor subdivision in that the property is less than 10 acres in area and proposes to create fewer than five lots. No new public roadways are contemplated or necessary in order to serve this subdivision or the lots within Red Hawk Landing. Red Hawk Landing was prepared in accordance with the seven conditions associated with how minor subdivision plats should be prepared and the 19 criteria associated with what a minor subdivision plat must contain as specified in section 4.10F of the city's subdivision development regulations. And all three lots being created with Red Hawk Landing meet the minimum lot area and frontage requirements for lots within C general commercial, and development on all three lots can reasonably meet setbacks defined for C general commercial zone properties. As previously mentioned, the applicant proposes to develop, to locate a 12 lot RV park on lot two. Within the C general commercial district, RV lots are considered a special review use which requires approval before planning commission and council. To aid in the evaluation, the characteristics of the use and potential impacts on surrounding properties, the applicant has included a conceptual site plan for how 12 RV spaces would be accommodated, with spaces measuring approximately 37 feet in width by 77 feet in depth, accessed from a common internal drive aisle. All of these spaces will be served by wet utility hookups for the RVs. Screening of these RVs, particularly from Mariposa Road, is the biggest impact associated with this project that needs mitigation. Fortunately, the applicant has agreed to include landscaping along the lot two frontage to Mariposa as part of the forthcoming site plan application to address this. Finally, staff finds that the three criteria specified in section 17.24.030 for evaluation of special review uses has been met or can be met with reasonable mitigation. Some additional notes of information about the Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision and SRU approval for an RV park on lot two include the fact that the applicant seeks approval of two conditional use permits associated with this site as well. One of these would allow for watchman's quarters on one of the spaces within the RV park on lot two. This would allow for onsite management of the RV park. The second CUP would allow for animal, specifically horse boarding, to take place on lot three. Now, under the city's review and approval procedures for conditional use permits, they are administratively processed against defined criteria and all neighbors on immediately adjacent properties are notified by US Mail of the application and its details so that neighbors can review the project and advise staff of any concerns they may have. To date, neither of the CUP requests has generated any inquiries with city staff. Staff has therefore prepared to issue CUP approvals for both requests, but only at the Minor Subdivision and Recreational Vehicle Park special review use are approved. Staff therefore recommends that planning commission cite the four findings of fact specified in section six of the staff report as certification of Canyon City's jurisdiction to act on the Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision and special review use request to allow an RV park on lot two, and then conduct a public hearing on the matter. Staff also recommends that planning commission recommend that city council approve the Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision request, subject to the three conditions in staff's report. Note that condition number two should have specified that the modifications requested in items four, five, six, and seven of the city engineer's memo dated October 11th are to be deferred until application for site plan. Staff also recommends that planning commission recommend council approve the special review use request for an RV park on lot two. Now that would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that planning commission may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is the property owner, Mr. Mont Rosenberg.
Thanks Patrick. Are there any questions from the commission of staff?
Chairman, I have a question. The horse boarding, are we talking about permanent horse boarding? Are we talking about while the RV park's in use? It could be either one. Could be either one, okay, thank you.
Do we have the owner here somewhere? Could we speak to you or?
Okay.
Is that possible?
Yeah, well, if we have any more questions for Patrick first, and then we'll have the applicant come on up if you don't mind.
Patrick, I had a question. So I'm just, why did we actually have to break the piece of property into three different lots? Why couldn't we just kept it the way it was?
Well, under our code, there can only really be one use per lot, one principal use per lot. So the only way they could put three uses on this property was to create three lots.
Okay.
My question Patrick is, just a couple of years ago, we had an issue right next door with the Dawson Stables that they were in a floodplain hazard area, I guess. Why, is this higher in elevation, or how come we're not in the same situation?
It is slightly. On this map, the low point in this property is actually here, and it does cross over the property onto the Dawson Ranch Stables, but this is not a 100-year floodplain area. That's just the area that's most convenient for where stormwater runoff is to be organized for detention purposes.
So it would infect the potential RV lot number two at all?
No, these two lots are actually fairly close to the grade of Mariposa, it slopes to the north.
Let me add, our issue with the last situation you're talking about was the actual location of the building that was not going to get moved.
Their watchman's area, they didn't.
Well, it was permanently there and they didn't want to move it.
And they didn't want to build it up to six inches, right. Just want to make sure we're not in the same situation we were last time.
No sir.
Okay, any other questions for Patrick? Would the applicant like to come on up and answer a couple of questions if you'd like? Or tell us about the project? Can you come up to the podium and state your name? Okay. How are you doing?
Quite well.
Good.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, and you are.
What can I answer for you, if anything?
You'll need to state your name.
Mont Rosenberg, my wife Deborah Spear, we're the co-owners.
My question is more or less for the lot number two, and you're saying potential RV lot, and I know it's going to be 12 spaces, and 10 are going to be used for the RVs. I'm assuming there're not going to be pull-throughs or?
No, they're all back in.
They'll back in, so is there going to be plenty of room for that?
Right. To do them as pull-in, we would have had to give up quite a bit of frontage that we want to, you know, camouflage the little resort by.
And I'm assuming there will be electricity for each of the lots?
Oh, everywhere, full utilities.
Okay, alright. Why here, why on Mariposa when it's kind of further away from Highway 50? What is the benefit to having it over here? Is it just because?
Well, my wife and I are looking at this more as a resort than an RV park. We're looking at it as a destination, and with the views we have up there and the amenities that's available, the park just around the corner. What's the name of the little park around the corner there?
Ecology Park?
Yeah, the Ecology Park, which is an equestrian area.
Right, right.
Right, so it's kind of a pull-through for, not pull-through, but a destination for people to want to ride.
Okay.
Which my wife and I have been at for a long, long time.
And so with an RV park, we're pretty well assured that it's not going to be a mobile home park?
No, absolutely not.
Nothing stationary?
Nope, they're going to have wheels and they're going to have to leave from time to time.
Right, so I was going to say, they're not going to be there for any length of time.
No, I don't think anybody's going to want to pay the rate for the year.
My other questions, my other questions concern your lot number three, and it talks about the aquaculture or the hydroponics. Can you define hydroponics?
Hydroponics is the use of recycled water to produce your crop. It's very, very, very pertinent in an area like this. And our situation is going to be more of a research situation. We've got several children, all who have engineering degrees and several that have doctorates. But it's a conservation of water aspect.
Right.
Where we grow tomatoes, the water goes in, the fish, the shrimp, this kind of thing. They clean the water, it recycles back out and grows more tomatoes. So, yeah, the use of water in a normal agricultural situation is extremely high. But in a hydroponics or aquaponics situation, it's minimal because it's all reused.
I saw greenhouses in there as well.
There'll be some plants, it'll probably be, you know, minimum number of different places, kind of things. Like I said, it's going to be more of a study on can it be done? We've talked to the state and the county, you know, and this kind of thing, and they have not successfully utilized this in very many areas. It's something that needs to be done just from the standpoint of conservation of water.
No, I understand, I just, when you put hydroponics and greenhouses together, at least over in other counties, it means something different, like recreational marijuana. And I wanted to make sure we weren't going to have something in our.
There's enough of that already around here.
Oh yeah, okay. And you talk about hippotherapy, and I'm assuming hippotherapy is horse therapy, riding horses?
Actually, that's the common name, hippo is the horse. Yeah, my wife, the equine specialist, is more in tune to that. She has the physical medical background, this kind of thing, she's been doing it for years. But it's, if you read my narrative on the piece, it's basically going to be done as a nonprofit charitable association, a foundation. And it's something we just want to give back.
And she's not talking very much back there, you're supporting everything he's saying?
Yeah, she'll throw rocks at me if she has to.
I think that is all I have, and that's probably, I'm good.
Is there anything else?
Any other questions from commission for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns? No? Any additional comments from commission? Okay. So I will close this public hearing. And we have three motions and seconds on this. So... Can I get a motion and a second based on the findings of fact?
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission cite the four findings of facts contained in the staff reports as evidence of the city of Canyon City's jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing on the Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision and the recreational vehicles special use used for lot two.
I'll second that. Do we need to add that revision, Patrick, about the?
You should do that when it comes to the motion for the minor subdivision.
Gotcha. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Denise, please call roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Motion, what's that?
When we get to the special review use, or, right? Yeah.
The next one, the motion, not this one.
I need a motion and a second for a recommendation to city council to approve the Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision.
As amended.
As amended. A motion and a second.
I move that the planning commission recommend that city council approve the Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision subject to the three conditions contained in the staff report.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
I second.
Alright. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Okay, last but not least, I need a motion and a second for recommendation to city council pertaining to the special review use for lot two.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the special review use for a recreational vehicle park at lot two, Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision.
Second.
Alright. Any further discussion on anything? No, Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Ms. Spear, thanks for coming tonight. We're here now.
You got someplace to be? We have to approve the riverfront.
Okay, item 4B, draft riverfront zoning ordinance. Applicants are here still? I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. I guess, I'll ask for a staff report. You can summarize what we're going to be voting on tonight.
Could we see the signs as well that you've brought, as well?
Only if needed. It was only to give examples of sizes.
Okay.
So, good evening commissioners, we are here for a public hearing on an ordinance adding section 17.18 to the Canyon City municipal code concerning creation of riverfront zone districts. So this is, the purpose of the meeting is the public hearing for the creation of those two new zone districts within the city of Canyon City's municipal code. Staff began work on this in approximately May of this year, and there have been four joint work sessions between city council and the planning commission, the four dates that you see here. Just a little bit of a reminder that zoning and creation of zoning is not new, that there has been zoning within the city of Canyon City for more than 80 years. This is a zoning map from 1941. I also came upon the ordinance that actually created the zoning commission or the now planning commission. So this body has been in place since 1927 concerning making decisions and recommendations around zoning for the community. Just a couple of the zoning maps over time. And then our current zoning, the categories that you see are listed here, and the purpose of this effort is to create two more zone districts within the toolbox. So of the ones that you see listed here, we would be adding two, a riverfront mixed use and a riverfront residential zone district. We've been through this a bit before, so obviously this is a next step effort to the regulating plan, which is the Arkansas River Quarter Master Plan. The purpose of this effort is to create more creative development patterns, allow for that along the riverfront, and entice redevelopment of the riverfront in Canyon City. We've talked a bit about where this is going to sit, that it's going to be within Title 17, which is zoning, and it would be a new chapter 18 within Title 17. We've also talked geographically where this tool could be applied, and that is generally between First and 11th Streets, adjacent to the Arkansas River. Again, just walking through the Arkansas River Quarter Master Plan, adopted in December of 2017 by city council. The precursors to this effort is that that master plan created two new land use categories that are the precursors for the zoning language. So there was a mixed use land use category identified as part of the master plan that anticipated a mix of uses. And similarly, a residential land use category that was added as part of the corridor master plan that considered promoting infill residential development on smaller lots with the intent of having more folks in the future living within walking distance of the riverfront and Main Street as well. living within walking distance of the riverfront and Main Street as well. So again, just as a reminder, we're creating the regulations, the written regulations as part of Title 17. We are not making any changes to the zoning map as part of this effort. The organization of the new Chapter 18 is in three articles. First, the general provisions. Secondarily, districts and regulations. And third, development standards. So just to remind folks that the current code has the same components as the tool in the toolkit. There are use standards. There are lot and building standards. And there are development standards within the existing code. In terms of the general provisions, many of you will recall through the various work sessions, we've outlined a series of purpose and intent statements to support the detailed information that is being proposed within the code language. So that is about a strong urban presence along the riverfront, developing key potential sites along the riverfront, having that strategic guidance and exceptional development practices, allowing for flexibility and creativity, allowing for the variety of higher intensity residential, having public access and an expanded riverwalk in our community, and being able to provide a transition from these new mixed use districts, if and when they are used, to existing surrounding uses. And just a reminder, in terms of that general area of applicability, of the about five and a half miles of length of riverfrontage that the city has within the city boundaries, this could apply to less than one mile of that frontage. Again, that's generally proposed to be between First and 11th Streets. And of the nearly 8,000 acres of land within city limits, we're really looking at about 70 acres plus or minus of land where this could be applied if somebody would come in for rezoning. So it's really less than 1% of the total land area within the incorporated limits of the city. The general provisions also outline the framework plans that talked about key frontages, particularly the fronting onto the river and how we want to animate that future riverwalk, and locations for the residential and how that might be applied in the future. The second article is where the districts and regulations are located. And as you recall, we walked through all of those in the various work sessions. And the main point to make here is that we are really using series of diagrams to illustrate the code, something that really has not been done before within the city and within Title 17. Just some more examples of the diagrams that are being included within the code. Further, we are taking the use information, permitted uses, and those are organized in table format. So the table indicates permitted uses, conditional uses, and special review uses, as well as any, you know, particular notes in that table format. And then thirdly, we have the development standards. There are six sections to the development standards, building, site, landscaping, lighting, parking, and signs. And with that, we'll open it up for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Not anymore. No, I'm not asking about the signs.
Yeah, can we back up? Okay.
Chairman, one...
Yes, yes, sir.
So, I mean, we generally reference that First to 11th Street corridor. If somebody who owned property outside of that general area wanted to basically rezone to a riverfront, say residential, how, does that work? And how would that, how could that function?
So that would be similar to any other rezoning ask. So if somebody came in, I think I've given the example or a similar example in the past of, let's say there's an area of R1 zoning and somebody wants to come in and ask to rezone their property to R3, they would come in and they could submit an application for rezoning. And staff would review that against what the intent is for the riverfront language to make a recommendation on where that would be, whether that would be applicable or not.
Okay. Would staff use the general guideline of First to 11th?
Yes, and that's, yep. The guidance, the guidance for that would be the purpose and intents, looking at the Arkansas River Quarter Master Plan, looking at the purpose and intent statements, and then also looking at the framework plans that are all in that upfront Article 1.
So are you saying that right now, First to 11th, if someone wanted 12, 13, 14, 15, if we wanted to go all the way down, they would just ask for rezoning and it's possible? Is that what you're saying?
That was the general question.
So basically, you can go all the way down to, with the proper rezoning, right?
Well, so with the proposed language tonight, it identifies that the preferred area, the intended areas, are generally between First and 11th Streets.
Right, right.
So if an applicant came in and asked for, to apply this zoning outside of that, staff would go through the process and review the purpose and intent statements, the regulating plan, which is the Arkansas River Quarter Master Plan, and make a recommendation to whether that was appropriate or not to apply that in that area.
Sounds good.
Well, in that case, I have a question. My understanding of the zoning map and this whole district thing was any expansion of that would have to come through the planning commission.
Right, so it would be a typical rezoning application, just like any other rezoning application. And so looking at, you know, sort of the findings of fact at that point in terms of what does the regulating plan say? And that's the Arkansas River Quarter Master Plan. What is the intent of the zoning regulations? And that's why we have those intent statements that we're proposing to include. Thirdly, looking at the guidance that's set up by the framework plans. So staff would use those tools to do their staff review and make a recommendation to planning commission.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? You sure? Nothing? Tim? No? All right. Deena, do we need to address the couple of things that were discussed earlier? One, about the flagpole height in the residential district or residential area. And two, the uplighting for flagpoles. Do we need to talk about that before we vote on this? Or are you just going to handle clarifying the flagpole situation?
I would say that it'd be great if the recommendation from planning commission on any adjustments to what's in your packet, having that as part of the motion moving forward would be great.
Okay, and before I, before I do that, do we have in our regular code, do we have any designation on residential heights of flagpoles in our current code?
I'm not recalling any off the top of my head. If we did, it would be in Section 17.20. And I'm not recalling flagpole height specifically being called out.
So someone could put a 35-foot flagpole in their front yard in Canyon City?
I believe the way the code is drafted now, there is no particular height limitation.
Okay. Does the commission want to address this and recommend a different height for the residential flagpoles?
In this particular plan?
Well, she's asking that part of our recommendation is to...
Right, as part of, as part of your recommendation, would you like to amend, one, the height, maximum height allowed for a flagpole in the residential district? And then the second piece of conversation in the work session was around the illumination of flags.
I think we talked about increasing it to 15 feet.
Correct.
And so maybe changing it from 12 to 15.
At least that, so 15 to 18. It just depends on what the...
Was the 12 just a number you just thought of based on the height of the houses and stuff?
It's often associated with a first floor.
Right.
So to make sure that you're, that any illumination
Isn't going to your neighbors.
Potentially isn't going into second-story windows either of the residence, the site it's on, if it's a two-story structure, or adjacent property owners. And remember that these are small lot residential.
I'm okay with it, but I'm not a flagpole person. So it's up to you guys if you want to increase that to 15 feet or leave it at 12, or increase it to 15 feet with only down lighting?
Kind of sounds like if we don't increase it to 15 feet, if we recommend it to council, they're not going to approve it?
Oh.
I would say...
Well, I think with that discussion and the fact that the height issue, you put two flags up on there, you're going to be basically clocking anybody that ain't a kid walking by. And I don't know that that's respectful. So I personally would like to see it raised to 15 feet. And as far as the lighting part, the down lighting on flagpole top lighting is, can be, I'm sure you can word that regulation on your fact sheet when you hand out a permit for it, to eliminate any of that overlighting for other people's property and stuff.
And we would also clarify it in the code as well. So we'll clarify that flags, at least I was hearing, just for the residential districts, you're going to allow uplighting. So those will be the two changes.
I think it was, Ashley Smith stated to stay consistent with down lighting.
Right. That's what I said, we're not going to, my understanding, we weren't thinking about down, or uplighting.
It's up for your consideration.
Yeah, I think what Ashley said, leave it consistent, down lighting only. But I think the height of the flagpole was an issue. And I can only hope that someday we have these problems, you know?
These are...
So we can all look back on these meetings and say, hey, we talked about those flagpoles and now there's 50 houses going up with flagpoles.
Have all the flagpoles.
So, well, let's, if there's no other questions or discussion about this, yet, okay.
One, one other thing, back to the durable metal or composite exterior furnishings, permitted in colors to match the building storefront? Could we add "or" black? Just, I mean, is the intention that the color of the chair would actually have to match the building? Would black not match?
Can you remind me what page that's on?
18.
Okay, so you're suggesting a modification to 7A?
Correct.
And can you repeat that?
What's that?
Can you repeat that?
I guess the question is, you know, what is the intent of colors? And then could we just add "or" black such that no matter what the color of the storefront is, black would be acceptable?
We can absolutely do that.
Okay, I have one final thing on the flagpole. It says, "When flying one flag on a single flagpole, the length of the flag should be at least one-quarter the height of the pole." Meaning, if we have a 3x5, the 5 being that quarter, that the flagpole should be 20 feet in height. I don't know if we want to go that high because we're talking about 15.
So Commissioner, can you tell me what exact page you're referring to?
The height of the flagpole.
And I'm not trying to answer for her, but if we're limiting it at 15 feet, that would basically require you to have a smaller flag. You wouldn't be able to strap a large flag on that pole.
A 3x5, which is standard for most outdoor flags.
Correct.
So...
So you're, so you're on page 32, under category portable flags. The first column, talking about maximum area and dimensions, the second bullet.
33, page 33?
32.
It's 33 on ours.
Yes, 33 on our page.
Okay.
Portable flag?
Can't trick us.
Right, so category, the portable flag. And then the first column there, speaking to maximum area and/or dimensions, the second bullet is what you're referring to? The size allowed from a pole mounted?
I don't, when hung from a pole mounted to the ground, 5 feet by 7 feet. I don't know what that means. I've never seen a 5x7 flag. Is that what they're talking about? That's a huge flag. 5x7.
So that's what, this is saying that's the maximum size that would be allowed?
Right, 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 right.
On a pole mounted to the ground.
And by that definition, a 5x7, that would be 32 feet.
Well, 35.
Where does it say in relation to the height of the pole?
That's not a city...
And that's just, that's a maximum. So you could have a smaller flag.
Right, right, right.
Oh, okay. It's my opinion we beat this to death. Do you think we kind of just move on? I mean, I know what you're saying.
No, I think 15 feet is good with downward lighting.
15 feet with downward lighting. I think that's our consensus. How does that sound to you?
And then the second change was on page 18, 7A. In A, adding a clarification to say to match the building storefront, or B, black. So those would be the two changes I'm hearing.
Or put a design committee together that handles this when the time comes. Right? Okay.
It is up to you.
If I'm still sitting here and there's houses going up in the riverfront, there's a problem. I mean, that could be next year, I don't know, maybe. You never know. Okay.
Don't wish yourself away.
No. Any further discussion? I now close this public hearing. I need a motion and a second to make the recommendations to city council with the two revisions.
Could I make that motion?
Yes, you can.
I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt a new Chapter 18 to Title 17 of Canyon City Municipal Code titled Riverfront Zone Districts. Is that as amended?
As amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
It passes. Any further discussion? Any announcements?
Oh, I have one announcement. It's not an announcement, it's a question on the, no, don't. On the website, it has my term limit as July 2019. So technically, I'm not really here. So...
I will, I will make sure that gets updated.
I mean, otherwise, I'll stay home next time.
No, you, I believe you were reappointed this past July.
I think I was, but...
It's in the minutes, you can't get out of it.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Yes.
Not speaking for this entire commission, but I think I can. Thank you very much, Deena, for all the work you put in, all the nightmares you've probably had. You can stop having it, have it something different now. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I second that. And we've been talking about this in this town for a long time. So thanks for actually putting it in writing.
And hopefully, we'll see it all go up.
Yeah.
And we can have a little bench that says, "Deena."
Especially a flagpole.
That might require a permit, I don't know. That's a sign.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.